Tonight, I'd like to open the meeting up by introducing the Deer Park Planning Board members. We have our far-right Teresa San Diego, next to it Greg Wagner, Willy Shah, Rob Whitney, Bob Vicaretti, and to the left of me, Mr. Al Fusco from Fusco Engineering, our town engineer, our town attorney, Mr. Glenn Powsky from Bevoso and Powsky Law Firm here in Port Jervis, and our Deer Park Planning Board Secretary Amanda Gore. We're playing through a big crowd tonight. This is probably one of the biggest public participations we had in any of the town at Deer Park Boards, whether it be Town Board, Planning Board, or ZBA.
The first speaker to have signed in is Angela Lee.
Hi, my name is Angela Lee LEE. I live at 48 Mallard Drive, Port Jervis, 12771. I've been pharmacist for 30 years. Back in January 2011, Rite Aid Pharmacy CEO announced 31,000 customers voted for 5,900 pharmacists as their favorite pharmacist. I was one of the top eight out of 5,900 pharmacists they voted. People said I saved their lives. I told people I should be number one. Truly, I should be number one because my store manager cannot find a box for people to vote for me until 15 days later. So I only have 15 days for my customer to vote for me. I'm still one of the top eight. When I was working at New Jersey, my boss transferred me to another pharmacy because nobody can handle it. When my customer found out, more than 40 of them called my boss and demanded him to transfer me back, and he did. To my patients, I'm not only a good pharmacist for them, I'm also a good friend that they can trust. I care about people and I love them. I would do everything I can to help them. It comes so easy for me that I can do that. That is because I've been practicing Falun Dafa for 20 years. Falun Dafa is based at Dragon Springs. Teacher Mr. Lee has been nominated for Nobel Peace Prize nominee, and Dragon Springs and Mr. Lee has been well-respected around the world. More than 100 million people are doing this around the world. And I thank Falun Dafa because I am at 70 years old, I still have good health and happy life, thanks to that. And also, I care about people too. I would like to, I'm fully trust the decision and the project that Dragon Springs has because like people trust me, I trust Dragon Springs. Because I believe Dragon Springs, every decision they made, have the projects, they will people, they will put Deer Park, people, or communities benefit first. So I'm favoring that. Thank you very much.
Andy Willingham.
Good evening. My name is Andy Willingham. I'm here representing the Bashakil Area Association. We've reviewed the project and the DEIS with regard to specific issues, wastewater, stormwater, erosion control, emergency access, and we have some substantial issues and environmental impacts that we'd like to share. You've submitted a detailed letter already to the board, but I'll try to summarize them the best I can in the time I have here. First, the wastewater treatment plant. They're proposing a large wastewater treatment plant that requires, it's a complex system that requires very detailed maintenance and complicated features on it, and it's going to require a full-time monitor onsite that's hired by Dragon Springs, and it'll be their responsibility to make sure this plant is operating properly. And the reason why that's important is that if it doesn't operate properly, we're talking about sewage and some pretty nasty stuff going directly into the Bashakil. It's a surface discharge right into the Bashakil. There is some history of Dragon Springs with discharge permits. They have a stormwater permit, and unfortunately, they performed dreadfully on it. They've had violation after violation after violation of stormwater runoff going into the Bashakil, brown water. We have pictures in our report. And this is, this is a permit that's relatively easy to fulfill. You basically need to put silt fence up, you need to do erosion controls. It's not that complicated. It's pretty rare. Over and over and over, they've violated that permit. And I think it shows their ability to follow a discharge permit. Now they're going to be dealt with a permit that's exponentially harder to follow, and the impacts are so much more devastating to the stream when it's when we're talking about raw sewage. Stormwater without getting in too far, essentially, the regulations are very complicated. They don't meet them at all. They, they use these different assumptions that are just completely incorrect. They're not meeting stormwater regulations. They kind of need to reset, and it's a do-over, basically. And that's detailed in my letter. Safety. Safety's a big issue here. There's, there's New York State Code that requires fire apparatus access to especially the building this size. We're talking about a 1,100-car parking garage and 900-person auditorium. Fire safety is important. You need fire apparatus roads going up to the building. You need to be able to pull side next to it with the get the ladder up on top of it. All kinds of regulations that they don't meet at all. You know, it doesn't even really come close. And I think that just needs to be gone through. The layout they're showing right now just doesn't meet the code at all as far as fire safety, especially in a rural town this small that doesn't have the means to fight fires.
Chris Murray.
My name is Chris Murray. I'm with the law firm of Ruskin Moscow Fulteshek, 1425 RXR Plaza, Uniondale, New York, 11556. As noted earlier, we did submit a letter. I will try to be short and concise in summarizing some of the major points. I think one of the larger issues with regard to this development that's not adequately addressed in the DEIS is the possibility of future development and whether this is a segmentation. The DEIS basically says, well, there's no facilities near the property, so they'll go elsewhere. So they don't discuss the possibility of a hotel, shops, restaurants that will come to the community and what the impact of those types of facilities will have. It's, I think this is an improper segmentation. There had been a previous development in the early 2000s, and now have this development. And I'd be curious as if the applicant will condition or assure that they're not going to come back here in a couple of years and ask for additional facilities at the site. Also, as mentioned in my letter, there have been prior violations. They seem to build something and then come back and ask for permission. There have been a number of situations where they have been found violations as regarded the permits and other regulations. And the question, and the problem is in these types of developments, one of the ways to mitigate against any harm is to place conditions, whether it's conditions about timing, when it can be opened, when the public can be there. And unless you're going to have somebody there 24 hours a day, you have really no assurances that whatever conditions you impose on them will actually be followed. And it's this prior history is relevant in making your determination. Also, I feel that the DEIS doesn't even address the impact on the character of the community, which is something that should be addressed in a DEIS. This is a primarily rural area. You're talking about a very intense development in an area with a limited population and a limited infrastructure. How is this development going to impact that community, which is really kind of the crucial question, is not really addressed in the DEIS. Finally, I just want to mention Ray Lupa. I know that there had been a prior lawsuit with regard to this property, but as set forth in my letter, not all uses are covered by Ray Lupa, even though it's a religious organization. And an example is a stormwater treatment plant is not part of a religious use, and is, I don't believe is covered by Ray Lupa, as is a number of the other structures, a parking facilities, a performing arts center. And even if these would be found to be covered under the statute, the statute only permits...
Sorry, sir. Time.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker, and thank you very much for printing your name next to your signature, Karen Buttonhoff.
Hi there, everybody. My name is Karen Buttonhoff. I live in the community. I've just heard about this, actually, this week, so I know very little about it, so I'm here to learn more. But all I'd like to say, living in this community for 28 years, most important thing should be we should all work together to keep our rivers clean and safe for our children and the future of our children. And if one group is not abiding, it's not fair to taxpayers who live here for years, who've worked hard, who've followed the rules, to have another group come in, and we accept anybody, but you must follow the rules of our community and keep our waters clean. It took years to clean up the Hudson River, the Delaware River, all these rivers. And it's a watershed, and it will affect the wells in the future if we let things like this go. Thank you.
Eric Sildorf.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Eric Sildorf, the Restoration Director at the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, based in Bristol, PA. The spelling of Eric is E-R-I-K, Sildorf is S-I-L-L-D-O-R-F-F. We have already submitted written comments, as noted earlier, and on behalf of Maya Van Rossum, the Delaware Riverkeeper, and the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, I'm here tonight to state clearly and without hesitation, the proposed Dragon Springs expansion is too big and too risky for this sensitive environmental setting. There will be significant environmental impacts if this proposed expansion moves forward. Some of these impacts are known. Other impacts have not been documented nor accurately described in the application materials and the draft environmental impact statement. The draft environmental impact statement that has been provided is incomplete and inaccurate and fails to characterize the impacts from the proposed development. Based on the information we have secured from the record as well as our own ground truthing, we know that the environmental impacts will be substantial, and the town of Deer Park, the state of New York, the Bashakil, the Never Sink River, and the Delaware River will all suffer serious and unacceptable harm. The known impacts from this proposed expansion really are tremendous. Unfortunately, the applicant has not revealed all of the impacts to be expected, and so while we know there will be significant harm, we don't know nor can we anticipate the full extent of the harm. For example, the applicant has not mapped all of the wetlands on the site that may be impacted by this development, has misrepresented the anticipated stormwater runoff, has not mapped all stream and tributary channels that will be affected, has not evaluated all endangered species that are likely to be impacted. In addition, some of the environmental impacts we anticipate are particularly grave and likely irreversible. Five acres of forested wetland that will be inundated as a result of the proposed dam will disappear forever. A small trout stream that will receive stormwater and wastewater from the proposal will likely no longer support trout or trout spawning. Two endangered and threatened species, the dwarf wedge mussel and the brook floater, who once thrived in the Never Sink River, will suffer and may be pushed to the brink of local extirpation. It is the position of the Delaware Riverkeeper Network that these environmental losses are not just unacceptable, but would be violations of the Clean Water Act and New York State regulations. This is the wrong proposal in the wrong place. Even in the most responsible hands, this proposed development is too risky. The Dragon Springs proposed expansion must not be approved. We must not accept the many and substantial environmental impacts that Dragon Springs proposes to inflict on our natural resources, our endangered species, and our communities. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Hi, my name is Tang Nguyen. I-N-G-U-Y-E-N. I live at 715 Prospect Hill, Huguenot. Three years ago, my wife and I moved up here because of work-related, and we moved to the area, and we just loved the environment, loved the community, and really loved the fresh air and mountains. But one thing bothered me when I get here is that there's a lot of empty abandoned houses. Why? Because nobody can afford living here. There's no job here. Every morning, I have to wake up at 4 o'clock in the morning, drive to work, and come home after 6 o'clock. That's the recipe. There's no, no life here. And I asked around my neighbor and asked them, is there anything around here that we can go for entertainment or anything? Nothing. They got, we got one gas station, one chicken wing restaurant, one pizza, and one repair shop. There's nothing here. Even when we get here, Middle Town and Port Jervis asked us to open their business in their community. And a lot of them, you know, just like Middle Town, because of the fallout of Dragon Springs, even their downtown is rejuvenated. Everything is reborn in Middle Town, but Dragon Springs is located right here. Why? Nothing happened here. But after three years now, I live here, there's a lot of people moving in, and they bought a house, like, just like me. I bought a pre-house, fixed it up, and then rented out for low-income people, and the community looks a lot better now. And for myself, I practice Falun Gom exercise, so I know how beneficial it is and how you have to behave and be good. And with my neighbors, you know, I try to be good with them and everything. And but one thing I want to say is that we have the best performing art in the world, the world-class performing art performing school. And if we don't treasure it, a lot of city, a lot of town love to get, have it. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sally Aber, and I live in the community. Maybe we like it rural. Maybe we don't want it built up. And I'd like to know, they're expanding to East Pinpack Trail now. What are they going to put in there that we don't know about? And they are. I already called the township supervisor's office. I thought a development was going in, but who knows what's going in there? And what's that runoff going to do to the people who live below it? It's going to contaminate their wells. And that's all I have to say. We need to keep our town safe and rural. We don't need big shops in Huguenot or anywhere around here. We like it this way. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Aber. I live in the same place, at 95 West Pinpack Trail. My first encounter, I worked for Dick's Concrete, chasing concrete trucks. My first encounter of being sent there, this is, I'd have to say, probably seven years ago now. Scared to live in hell right out of me. I was met at a gate with a guy carrying an AK-47. What is that? That is nothing we need in our community, and that's Dragon Springs. What do they need guns for up there? To protect their property? Don't they have cops? Don't we have cops that protect them here? Why was I met at a gate with an AK-47? Were they going to use that on me because I had to go in there and fix a concrete truck? And another thing I'd like to know is all that runoff is going into the Never Sink. Has the Trout Commission known about this yet? Or has they been notified about this yet? Because that's going to kill all them trout in that brook. And they've been putting that trout in that brook for years. It brings people to the community to fish there for those things. Not that. That's all I...
Good evening. Grace Woodard, W-O-O-D-A-R-D, 2, Old Carriage Road, Godaffroy, New York. Pollution, violations. Pollution, violations. Building without permits, stop work orders. Building without permits, stop work orders. Dragon Springs is not environmentally friendly, to put it mildly. Pollution, Bashakil. Pollution, Lime Kill into the Never Sink. Violation, small fines, violations of two years ago, a tear down in 2018 of a quarter-mile-long covered walkway, which was taken down practically inch by inch. I've seen all of the inspection reports from 2018. I think some of it still exists. The Lime Kill leaves Guymarde Lake, goes down into the Never Sink. It had been cared for by my family for the last 200 years. The Never Sink, the Bashakil, right along Galley Hill Road, filled this year, well, 2018, about six times with plumes. They do not take care of the streams. There is no environmental awareness, concern for the neighborhood or the community, and the community is part of the environment. And I have to say, I appeal to everyone on this board that we are members of the community, We have been patient. I've been to over 80% of the meetings in the last four years, zoning board, town board meetings, planning board meetings. There is a great deal of attention curried to small projects with lots of questions, lots of details, but when it comes to the Dragon Springs issue, there are hardly any, there's very little input. I think things go to the town engineer and things are worked out.
Time.
Thank you very much.
Bob Majcher.
Bob Major, M-A-J-C-H-E-R, 112 Galley Hill Road. My property is from Galley Hill Road down to the Never Sink. I'm on the Bashakil. I'm the first person that has been seeing all the mudslides and all the mud coming down into the Bashakil for the past eight years. I have documentation pitches that I would like to submit to the board. These pitches are from 2011 and mostly 2018, which all have been reported to the DEC, and the DEC just finds, and that's it. My question to the board is, how are they going to make a sewer plant work when they can't even do their construction right? My other question is, is this plant built already? If this plant is built, they're under the same criteria they've done for everything else, like a six-story building, or that ramp, that housing, that walkway, that's still torn down, and I can still see it for the past six months, and it was built without any permission.
Just for purposes of the record, I acknowledge receipt of eight photographs that will be marked collectively as exhibit number 18. Thank you, Mr. Majcher. Dushanka Marusic.
My name is Dushanka Marusic, M-A-R-U-S-I-C. I'm a seasonal resident at 260 Galley Hill Road. My road is zoned rural residential. Let that sink in again. Rural residential. It's not a city. I have been coming up here for over 40 years to our little piece of heaven. Quiet, peaceful, bathing in forestry, and then my boys hunt. And that's what we do up here. We enjoy the peace and quiet until Dragon Springs moved in, and they built a city without supporting infrastructure. I've been coming to a lot of meetings, and I've been sending letters, and I'm sorry, I have not had answers. My question is, when my well, when will my well run dry? Who will pay for my new well? I don't feel safe in the town anymore. When I hear that the fire department hasn't completed its inspections, and that there are buildings that are so high in that complex that we do not have proper equipment to service any major fires, I know a fire can spread easily. I do not feel safe being so close to that complex. And I expect you folks to do something about it, okay? Expanding it even more when they can't control what's going on there now, and you can't control what's going on there now. When I go to meetings and I hear that inspections by the town are weekly, how on earth had they been able to build a quarter of a mile walkway? If there had been weekly inspections that are adequate, how on earth can they build an entire story that has no permit? We are either unwilling or unable to control what goes on there, and it jeopardizes everyone. You need to get a handle on this. You need to follow the zoning laws, follow the town planning, because I read the town planning, folks, and there's a lot that's, that says about protecting the rural character of this area. And granting variances or worried about getting sued again is not getting the job done. You've got to do something about it. Experts come here. What we've had, neighbors had to hire lawyers, hire engineers, beg the help of environmental groups to tell us what's going on. We see it with our own eyes. We come to meetings, we tell you about it, nobody listens to us. So we had to hire experts to confirm our beliefs, okay? That should be your job. It really should.
Ken Porada.
Ken Porada, P-O-R-A-D-A, 224 Galley Hill Road. My wife and I have lived on Galley Hill Road for over 30 years. I'm speaking today in hopes of trying to explain how Dragon Springs development has never been... how Dragon Springs development has negatively affected me, my family, my home, my neighborhood, our way of life, and this pristine rural region. We moved out of that shithole Middletown because we wanted to live someplace where it was quiet. We didn't want development. We put every dollar. We overextended ourselves to buy our house, to live there. Dragon Springs has proven to want only and consistently fault the rules of law. This corporation has snubbed its nose at all of those, of all of us who have been required to meet town, county, and state codes. They have done this more than anyone whom has ever come in front of our elected leaders. This facility is not fit nor suited for the community it has illegally built within. The increased traffic on my lazy rural road is dangerous, unwanted, and not suited to the design of the roadway. Galley Hill Road is rural residential and was not constructed for a complex that is expected to host thousands upon thousands of visitors annually. Again, I remind you that Dragon Springs and its people have abused the town of Deer Park. Its laws abused the environment, abused our roads. They have abused my neighbors, some who won't even come here anymore. It causes too much stress and anxiety. Our friends and my family. We, the people, have elected you to represent us and uphold the rule of law in our civil society. Do your job.
Good evening, that's John Hayes, H-A-Y-E-S. I live at 352 Rock Hill Road in High Falls and I represent the Board of Directors of Friends of the Shangums. The mission of FOS is protecting the Shangum Mountains from adverse environmental impacts. Now, I wrote a letter to the chairman and that has been entered as Exhibit 6 this evening. And some of the points that I made have already been pointed out tonight, so I will skip over those. Specifically, that being the treatment of raw sewage into our Never Sink and Bashak Hill. So that's already been discussed. So I'm gonna skip down to my second point. And with regard to local roads leading to Dragon Springs, the number of residents and visitors, 2,000 per day, will have a devastating impact on these small, narrow lanes. They were never intended to service this type of traffic. It is FOS's contention that the amount of consideration given to the impact of traffic on these roads, not to mention the degradation of air quality from cars, trucks, and buses, has been insufficient and thus must be denounced in the strongest of terms. Ultimately, it will be the local residents who will have to pay for the inevitable repairs to local roads and the widening that will be necessary to accommodate the heavy traffic. Overall, neither the town of Deer Park nor the Shangum Bridge can support the expansion of Dragon Springs complex. It is clearly too large a behemoth to exist in this fragile rural setting. This project will change the character of Deer Park forever. Therefore, Friends of the Shangums is opposed to the proposed expansion. And I'd like to say, it was famously said that "The price of liberty is eternal vigilance." And so is the price of environmental integrity. Thank you.
Susan Ernie, E-R-N-Y, 2475 Route 209, Wartsboro. I'd just like to say, the magnitude of Dragon Springs development, proposed development and its environmental bootprint is massive when you consider the context of the resources to be harmed. The project as proposed will transform a formerly forested headwater site with over 60% steep slopes into an industrial bootprint with towering structures, nearly 10% impervious cover, and a large wastewater treatment plant with entire wetlands being totally eliminated. The irreparable loss of sensitive forest and wetland resources on-site demands a failure, demonstrates, I'm sorry, a failure to plan development activities appropriate to this setting. Approving even one of the proposed elements in such a setting would be environmentally risky and would induce significant environmental impacts, even with the most responsible landowner and the most advanced development stormwater and wastewater practices and technology. This DEIS is incomplete and inaccurate. It fails to represent site conditions for major environmental features. It inaccurately describes the significant environmental impacts that will occur with the proposed development. A full and complete evaluation of the environmental impacts from the proposed development is not possible with the information presented by the applicant thus far. This proposed development in the DEIS would result in significant and substantial adverse environmental effects, particularly those associated with surface waters and wetlands and the living resources dependent on these waterways. The Town Planning Board must deny requested approvals for this project.
Good evening. My name is Steven Schneider with a V and an N, from Schneider Engineering, 1 Comac, C-O-M-A-C, Loop, Ronkonkoma, New York. I represent the Deer Park Rural Alliance Group. I've been here before, made some comments before. I have a report that I will give you after my three minutes. I decided, because I only have three minutes, to work backwards, because the last part was the most important part. And it sort of will show you an indication of the type of work that's been done by the group, by the professionals in the group. If you look at the site plan on Page S2, don't look for it now, they do show, and this is a separate application that they put in recently, more recently than the, well, the other applications. That site plan shows the way trucks and buses, or buses, would actually move onto the major access, getting into the facility on the south side of the property. Interestingly, they show the truck tires, or the bus tires. And guess what? They show them going into walls. They can't make the turns. It's amazing. I could not believe I even saw that in there. But that gives me an indication of the type of work that was done to put this together. If you look at that drawing, you'll see all the cars, all the buses, I'm sorry, who are making the turns, going eastbound or westbound, wanting to go through the loop or jug handle, they're going to the walls. Plus, of course, the width is not wide enough for two buses as well. So I'll just mention that. And of course, the traffic study that was done had absolutely no discussion about that loop whatsoever. And a traffic impact study should. That's one of the critical reasons for a traffic impact study. It's supposed to be a safety study. I'm gonna read you, just mention a few things to you. What I want you to understand are the numbers, just the numbers of what we talk about. Many people discussed some of the numbers before. The music hall, for example, is anticipated to be the major site generator. It will contribute a 12-fold increase in traffic to the site. There will be 2,200 daily trips to the site. Okay? Right now, there's 175, 175. Okay? There's a lack of details in all the reports, all the DEIS. The proposed road improvements are not enough to handle the issues of traffic safety. You've gotta realize, in the area around the property, you've got no lighting, you've got poor site distance, the roads are too narrow, the roads are in terrible condition, and you physically can't get into the site. The first thing when you look at a property is, how do I get to the site? And you know what? You can't. These buses that'll be going there, going to the music hall that they're gonna have up there, I presume it's not operational yet, but maybe halfway up, can't get there. They will not, and the people that are going there.
Time.
Thank you very much.
Alex Scilla, S-C-I-L-L-A, here with the Mid and New York Environmental and Sustainability Committee, here in support of the Deer Park Rural Alliance. So, I mean, everyone that's been up here, they've covered a lot of things. I'm gonna try and put it on to one thing: land use. What we have here, it's all into land use. Rural land, urban land, what should go there. We have here a rural land with rural roads, with wetlands, with, you know, endangered species, aquatic species, substantial forage coverage. Why is this plot of land the land that should be built into some industrial, commercial center? You don't build an airport on a fault line. You don't put a high-rise in a marsh. You don't try to build a railway on a glacier. Out of all the spots that could support this in the tri-state area, in the industrialized northeast, that would all be better cost-wise, safety-wise, permitting-wise, compliance-wise. Why are we trying to put this on a mountain where, even in the best of cases, even if technically, you know, it's engineering, the engineering was possible, you could make this, you could mitigate any environmental impact, what advantage would it have on this site? That it wouldn't have more of an advantage on any other site that would be more suitable? Why? Why is the question, again, and why is land use? Why is it even being considered? Why is rural land and all that? This is an industrial use, it's an urban use. It should immediately go to industrial. From the start, it should have been designed to be in an area that could support it and that it would make sense and that it wouldn't be this back and forth where everyone has to come in and try to squeeze it in, try to get around the corner and put it in for some reason when on every level, it makes no sense. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zenon Dolniki. I live at 293 Frankie Road in Huguenot, New York. I first came to the town of Deer Park in 2002 before any buildings were built on Dragon Springs. I came here as a volunteer to Dragon Springs and had a life-changing experience, interacting with nature and helping to build something that, throughout history, has been something that is, actually harmonizes with nature. I understand the concerns that everyone has, as I have the same ones. I like, I love living rural residential. My wife would like to move to Middletown and I wanna stay. I like the fact that, you know, new homes have to have two acres and I like our community the way it is. I moved here in 2015. And ever since living here, I not only volunteered at Dragon Springs, I volunteered at the Cutterbackville Fire Department. I fought in a couple of fires, something I'll never forget. I have helped with the acquisition and redevelopment of New Hope Farms into New Century Films. I was a founding board member of Unison Enterprises, a local real estate company. And I'm committed to this community. My family is committed to this community. I had it. I'm very proud to say I brought a life into this, into this community three years ago. My children went to the schools and... I have to say, my lived experience, not my opinion, but my lived experience with the people of this town off of the Dragon Springs Mountain and with the people on Dragon Springs Mountain is that these people are actually quite similar. And they want a lot of the same things. And I think over the years, particularly members of the planning board, if you've been on it for a very long time, you've witnessed a greater and greater effort by Dragon Springs to work with the town and work with the town's people. That's something I've lived through, something I've witnessed. And I don't, it's very hard not to respond to the accusations that have been indirectly leveling against me and my community. But I just wanna say that we all care about our community. I care about the rivers. Any of the experience I've had with the people on Dragon Springs, they care about the environment and they care about the community as well. As Falan Gom practitioners, we carry a very lofty goal and a very profound mandate, which is no different and is completely harmonizes with that of the spirit of America, of what America is doing right now in the world every day. We are working hand-in-glove with that. And it is the pride of Deer Park to have that movement here. And when we travel the world and I talk to people, they are very proud of it and they would like to come visit it. And that does not mean we have to kill all the fish in the world and that does not mean we have to destroy the environment. There are ways forward and we have to be united, not divided.
Time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna try. I think it's Gail Reader, Ryder.
Hi, my name is Gail Rachlin. That's R-A-C-H-L-I-N. My address is 18 Wedgwood Lane, Middletown, Mount Hope. I lived at Deer Park for about three years when I moved here in 2014. I'm gonna take some of my notes here. I do real estate and over the last five years, I've sold over 300 houses in our area, in Deer Park, Mount Hope, and Middletown, and Port Jervis. At least 100, if not more, is in Deer Park. All paying taxes and all part of our group. I'm sorry. I teach Falan Dafa currently in Orange County for the senior centers, you know, for the regional offices here. And I also became number one in real estate with Keller Williams for the last two years. I did over 100 transactions each year. The next one was 38. This is due to a lot of our people at part of the Falan Dafa practice moving to our area, which can only enhance the area. We never harm people. We are kind and considerate. We practice compassion, truth, and patience. And we never intentionally impose on others. That's not part of what we do. We are the largest spiritual practice in the world, bar none. So if you really get to know Dragon Springs and try to understand what they really stand for, I think we can all work together a lot better. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate you very much.
Yes, Sal Minck, M-I-N-K. I live at 509 Prospect Hill Road. The Riverkeeper has spoken to the devastation that Dragon Springs will wreak on the ecosystem and in surrounding the Bashak Hill and the Never Sink. This alone is enough to give the board grounds for denying the permit. I wish to address a couple of other issues that will impact the quality of life in Deer Park. Water and infrastructure. 100,000 gallons per day. Wastewater? Where's that water coming from? That's the amount of water it would take to supply 500 single-family dwellings. What happens when we have a drought? Dragon Springs has enough money to dig deeper wells. I don't, do you? The roads, both of the roads that go by Dragon Springs are windy, two-lane roads. And they both have bridges that cross the Never Sink or the Bashak Hill. If we have buses, 42 buses and 1,000 cars going over those bridges every day, not to mention the four times a week that the septic system is gonna have to be drained. Those are pretty big trucks. And all the equipment... And all the equipment to build this gigantic facility, I don't see how our infrastructure can support that, and I think it'll break the town. So, all I have to say is just say no.
Peter Best?
My name is Peter Best, B-E-S-T. I'm at Guy Mark Turnpike in Godaffroy. And I'm referring, referring to the postcard that has been circulated here in the audience. And the bridge that's on that postcard, this is a violation that goes back to December 4th, 2015. The Environmental Conservation League has issued the violation to the engineer at Dragon Springs, and of course, copies were to Deer Park as well. On October 30th, 2015, Brian Drum from Region 3, Department of Environmental Conservation, Bureau of Habitat, met with the compliance check for Environmental Conservation Law Article 15 permit, blah, blah, blah. This permit authorized the replacement of two bridges carrying both north and south access roads to Dragon Springs over tributaries of the rivers. You are directed to immediately stop violating Article 15. This inspection revealed the two bridges, one that you see on that postcard, but both are built the same. They deviated significantly from the plans approved in the permit. In both cases, steel I-beams were used below the bridge deck while maintaining the approximate road grade, significantly reducing the vertical clearance between the bed of the stream and the bridge superstructure. As construction, it is likely that at some point in the future, during a high-flow event, which we see more and more in this day and age, the bridge will not be able to handle the volume of water and/or will become clogged with debris, resulting in a backup of water upstream of the bridge, erosion and scour of the stream bed and banks near the bridge, flooding and closure of public roads, and potential washout of the bridge completely. This will have a negative effect, of course, on health, safety, welfare of the people of the state and the natural resources of the state, including soil, forests, blah, blah, blah. Thank you.
Shirley Hu?
Good evening. My name is Shirley Hu. I'm living in 133 Route 209. Three years ago, I moved to this beautiful town. I can breathe the freshness and sweetness air every day. Twelve years ago, when I support Dragon Springs for those Falun Gong's offense, actually, China government put me in a prison. And at that time, actually, it's Falun Gong practitioners, they saved me. Through the Falun Gong, I, actually, I recover my spiritual parts. So, this is why I'm here today, because I'm very appreciative about Dragon Springs. And also, I'm very appreciative when the persecution happened, actually, American and here, the local people and the government, accept Dragon Springs. I'm very appreciative in my heart. I'm so sorry to hear about what I heard today. I think, you know, for the technical parts, all the problem can be solved. But the Dhafta Falun Gong is really safe a lot of peoples. So I hope we can have opportunity, can do much better. Thank you. I'm sorry for what we bring the troubles if we did. Thank you very much.
Peter Way?
Good evening. My name is Peter Way, working at New Century Film. I'm a resident of Deer Park, living at 235 Route 209. Shortly after I moved here, I began to like almost everybody that I met with in this area. I have been long fascinated by the founding principles of our great nation. To me, the very best values of Americans are well-preserved and practiced in the daily lives of people living here. Day by day, I've learned from different individuals in different walks of life. As a return, we want to share our stories, our culture, and our facility with everybody. Because other than the languages and the skin colors, the traditions that we value the most are the same. Besides making family-friendly, family-friendly good movies, we also had community events, like a moon festival, weekend market, and the upcoming International Family Festival. We are very pleased to hear so many positive feedbacks from those who have attended our activities. As you may well understand, were not for Dragon Springs, we probably would not have come to this town in the first place. Now we've come, we're happy to be neighbors of the wonderful people here. We appreciate all the kindness and hospitality of all you people, especially born and raised here. We understand your feelings, because you cherish the land more than anybody else. Let's support our wonderful neighbor, Dragon Springs, like supporting our friends and the family, where there's always highs and lows, rises and downs, appreciations and misunderstandings. Because we all know, we know, we all learn and grew up this way. And every piece of goodness will be returned in the same beautiful way that is offered. Thank you.
Martin Wechsler?
Hello, my name is Martin Wechsler, W-E-C-H-S-L-E-R, 27 Old Carriage Road, Godaffroy. I work professionally in the nonprofit arts field as a curator, producer, and administrator, and for the, and for the, as the director of programming for the Joyce Theater in Manhattan. For the past 22 years, I know a lot about performing arts and a lot about theaters. So I'm gonna limit my remarks to the incredulous aspects of the DEIS with regard to the concert hall that Dragon Springs proposes to build. With expectations of 2,000 daily visitors to Dragon Springs, and the concert hall with a capacity of 920, it's unbelievable that there is no mention in the plan of the concert hall, or anywhere in the DEIS, for a cafe or a restaurant. Can you imagine having 2,000 visitors coming to such a remote location and not having a place for them to eat or drink? It's absurd. With Dragon Springs' historical violations and disregard for building permits, I imagine that they will build a cafe and a restaurant, which will have a significant negative environmental impact from water use, waste, and traffic from deliveries, none of which is accounted for in the DEIS. The DEIS states the development will have no impact on local police or fire departments. In theaters where I worked, we called the police to deal with all sorts of matters: unruly patrons, protests. We were also regularly inspected by the fire department to ensure that we adhered to fire codes. We would call ambulances to help patrons with health emergencies. I can assure you that if a concert hall is built, there will be a significant impact on the town's emergency responders, which is not accounted for in the DEIS. What was shocking to me about the DEIS is that the plans for the concert hall will not support the performances of Shenyang, the world-famous dance company that's based at Dragon Springs. The plans do not have sufficient stage space or technical facilities necessary to support the rehearsals or performances of Shenyang, which requires a large-scale, fully-equipped theater. Why would Dragon Springs spend millions of dollars to build a concert hall that cannot accommodate performances by its major attraction? I suspect that either the concert hall that Dragon Springs will build will be substantially larger and have significantly more harmful impact on the environment than is indicated in the DEIS, or that Dragon Springs intends to build, or already has built, another larger-scale theater that can accommodate Shenyang performances that is not mentioned in the DEIS. From a performing arts perspective, the concert hall component of this proposal does not make any sense. And if approved, its environmental impact will be substantially worse than the DEIS indicates. Thank you.
David Fanger?
Thank you, and good evening, and thank you all for your time. Very much appreciate it, recognize that this is a significant amount of time for you to commit to this. David Fanger, Evson Frank, A-N-G-E-R, I live at 27 Old Carriage Road in Godaffroy. And I think many of the comments tonight are about a lot of different issues. I want to be clear, and I think you all know clearly, this isn't about whether people are getting along or not. I don't think this is any reflection on a religion or a religious practice or religious observance. This is a technical matter. Does this proposal and the environmental, adequately, is it adequately reflected in the environmental impact statement? And what is the environmental impact? And the problem with that statement is, it has vast numbers of inconsistencies, inaccuracies, and even conflicting information. I'm not gonna go into detail, because they're in our letter, and they're in a number of other documents that have been submitted. And then, as Martin Wechsler just pointed out, there's, within the plan itself, there are certain things that are just incredulous, that just don't make sense, that don't add up. And there's a history of violations. And so, the environmental impact seems like it's gonna be remarkably damaging. And it seems like it's up to you to determine that and to make that decision on behalf of the community. And if they can present a proposal that meets the rural residential nature of the zoning, and that has, environmental impact can be mitigated, then sure, go ahead. But short of that, you have an obligation to deny this proposal. Thank you.
Carol Nielsen?
Carol Nielsen, N-I-E-L-S-E-N, 64 Never Sink Drive. With the past history of Dragon Springs, I cannot believe the compliance on this wastewater plant will be up to standards. My husband is a retiree from the Port Jervis sewage system. Several questions he has brought up. Who will license the people to monitor the system? Will it be Dragon Springs members? That have shone through the years, they can't follow rules? Make up their own? What will happen? We're talking the numbers of people that have been expressed here tonight. Who will monitor it? That's my big question. Who will monitor it? The pollution is going to be horrendous. Think about it.
Guy Hennessy?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. My name's Guy Hennessy, H-E-N-N-E-S-S-E-Y. I just wanted to express my own opinion. I'm not a public speaker, so I may not speak totally correct. But I moved up here from the town of Blooming Grove. I graduated from Washingtonville High School. When I grew up down there, it was all dairy farm land. Soon, the dairy farms all closed up and sold their property for developments and housing. No more country life. Country life is what I liked when I was growing up. That's why I moved up here. I like to hunt and fish. And I like the country life. I like to sit out in the yard and listen to the wind whistle through the trees. The magnitude of this community or this operation that's going on with Dragon Springs seems to be getting out of control. And if they have it to such a magnitude that they need a sewage treatment plant and want to spill it into the Never Sink reservoir, one of the best trout streams we have in New York, I think that's a little bit out of control and a little bit too much to ask. Because I feel that it's gonna kill the fish, and we're not gonna have any trout to fish anymore. And, you know, if they think that their sewage treatment plant is gonna be safe enough to spill their sewage or their overflow into the river, they built a reservoir up there, by what I understand. So why can't they take their wastewater and put it in their reservoir and drink it? Thank you.
Marco Bianco?
Hello, good evening. My name is Marco Bianco, B-I-A-N-C-O. And I live at 19 Island Drive, which is an island in the middle of Never Sink. I just moved out this way about three months ago, from LA, with my family. I grew up in Manhattan, and I spent my summers out here. And, excuse me, I just found out about this issue about a few days ago, so I didn't really have too much time to prepare. But I moved out here to conserve. I moved out here because I could not think of anywhere else in the country or in the world that I've traveled to that was as beautiful and as pristine. And the thing I think is one of the most unique properties about this area is it's so pristine and so close to a major city. So close to New York and so underdeveloped. And I think that's where the opportunity lies in this region, more than anything. I think that's where the economic opportunity is in this region. And I came out here to try to develop some trout fishing programs. I'm an avid fly fisherman, and the Never Sink and the surrounding rivers are known as the birthplace of American fly fishing. And I think to, as a side note, I'm also Facebook's third-largest political advertiser. It's Ben O'Rourke, Donald Trump, and me. So I know marketing, and I intend to bring a lot of optics to this issue and put people on record for this issue. And, you know, it's just, aside from the environmental impacts, which are undeniable, the optics of a religious community dumping a bunch of wastewater into one of the most pristine trout streams in the world. You talk about, there's a saying, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Well, the baby is the Never Sink. And we're gonna throw it out with the bathwater in the sewage of Dragon Springs? It's crazy to me that it's even being considered. It's just crazy, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Oh, you wanna recess? Levi Browde?
Hello, my name is Levi Browde. Last name is B-R-O-W-D-E. I live on Guy Mark Turnpike. Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to hear our voices. I was raised in the town, not in Deer Park, but I was raised in a town a lot like Deer Park. A little bit smaller than Deer Park, called Cedar Crest, in the foothills of the Rocky Mountains. And I loved it there, and that's why I love living here, for a lot of the reasons that the folks here have talked about. The rural environment. But there's realities about living in the rural environment. There's challenges that we have to be realistic about facing, so that it's not just us that can enjoy this rural environment. It's our kids. I've got two boys, I'm raising two boys here. It's their kids' kids. What I've seen happen in Cedar Crest is a complete dry-up of economic activity, and that hurts everybody. It means that, you know, there's a few too many abandoned houses. It means there's too many parents that gotta get in the car every morning and drive an hour and a half, two hours to work. They don't get home till 7:30 or so, spend an hour with their kids before they go to bed. There's a strain when we don't look at viable economic activity and make sure there is sufficient amount of that to uphold the rural town that we want to keep, for, again, for not only ourselves, but for our kids. My opinion, what I've seen, I've been in I've been invited up to Dragon Springs. I've actually seen it with my own eyes. I know some of the people that do that. These are some very conscientious people. These are hard-working people. These are good-natured people. And I think what they're doing up there, I would categorize as a very rural-friendly endeavor. They've got a college up there. They've got a temple up there. It's very harmonious with the land. I think it's a fantastic thing. And so, I'm here-- first point I want to make is I support that. I've seen it with my own eyes, and I think what they're doing is amazing. Not just for myself, but for my boys and their families and the folks that are going to live here after us. The second point I want to make is-- maybe a little bit philosophical, but I think it is important as Americans to remember our story, what makes this country great. Dragon Springs is a great American story. You've got people who-- very sort of peaceful meditators. They've been violently persecuted in their homeland. I know people that are working up at Dragon Springs whose family members are dead because the Chinese regime killed them. People who've been tortured themselves. And what did they do? Did they lash out in violence? Did they lose spirit? No, they looked to America. Some of them escaped, and they got here. And they came here with nothing, absolutely nothing. And in the last-- I don't know what it's been-- 12 years, 13 years, 14 years, they've built something out of nothing. And it's amazing.
Time.
Thank you so much.
Sue Miller.
My name is Sue Entenmann, E-N-T-E-N-N-A-N-N. And I'm coming here tonight-- I only heard about this three days ago. I have no problem with the people. We try to support anybody that moves to our community. But now they're attacking our wildlife. Yeah, it's water. We use the water wildly. But we have our eagles from Bashak Hill. They eat fish. We have our bears. I'm sorry, I'm on the ill side right now. But I am raising my grandchildren. I have raised four children. We grew up in this whole area, between Otisville and Godabackville. And all I want is to keep going the way it's going. You want to do that? Go back to China and do it. Don't do it in our country. We accept you. So why push it? I want my children and grandchildren to have what I have. I've always been in the country. I'm a foreign girl from PA. And Mennonite Amish. And this is how I want to live. I don't want all that. I am not a public speaker. I'm just a mother and a grandmother. And I want to see my kids and grandchildren grow up happy and clean. Thank everybody.
Kayla Barnes.
My name is Kayla Barnes. I have lived in this community for about 10 years, and I worked at the local hair salon in Godabackville for four. Over-- Sorry, is that better? Sorry, I'm not a public speaker. I'm shy. I have learned over the years of what a great community this truly is. And over the years, I've also seen Dragon Springs build bigger and bigger. I've seen the stop work orders, and I've also seen them continue their work with no regard to this community or the laws or the regulations. Sorry. I personally have nothing against Dragon Springs at all. I have no reason to, as a practicing Episcopal. I'm taught to love everybody, for the most part. What I do have a problem with is the in regard to following our rules and regulations of this community, while the rest of us taxpayers do actually follow them. I have a problem with the impact that Dragon Springs has had and will have on this environment community. Some people may think there's nothing here. We who have nothing or had nothing but a yellow blinking light in Godabackville for whatever-- before Dollar General-- there is more than that here. To those who can actually stop and smell the roses for a minute, to those who want more than big-city life, there is hunting, there is fishing. There are families here who like the rural environment. I hope to start a family and raise one in this area. I hope, when I plan to do so, that it is safe for at the time, not to be a big, built-up city like Middletown. I think a lot of us at this point feel sold out, and we are pissed off. I would love to believe that we can all live in harmony and peace, and I would love to see that. However, their actions have spoken louder than their words. Thank you.
Jean Pang. Jean Pang.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jean Pang, P-A-N-G. I live in 21 Penton April Terrace. As the first-generation immigrant, I deeply love this country because I experienced the greatness and the diversity of the country and learned the rights that naturally belong to a citizen but you would never have those in Communist China. From last year, I have been involved in organizing some events at New Century, such as the Moon Festival in Deer Park. To put a festival like this, definitely not an easy work. Many volunteers spend days and nights to work on the logistics, setup, design, set plan, promotion, and all of that. But when you see how much people love this in the festival, and when they left with smiles, you feel all the hard work is paid off. We're now working hard on the other festival, like International Family Festival, May 9th to 13th. And we invite all the families to come and experience the memorable family times here with amusement rides, antique car shows, great food, music, dance in your neighborhood. To have successful events, we also got a support and help from the people in the town, the fire department, the police department. Effie effort is to make the town of Deer Park a happier, safer, more diversified, and a lovely place to live and stay. Last but not least, I just want to say I have learned that all of the technical issues at Dragon Springs have been solved. We would like to see Dragon Springs' success and opportunities for this area because, come together, we could go further. Thank you.
David Gordon.
Good evening. My name is David Gordon, G-O-R-D-O-N. And I'm an attorney representing the Deer Park Rural Alliance. We haven't submitted comments yet. I will be submitting comments in the coming days. I just want to give my-- give the board my impression of the situation before the board and what's happened tonight. It is clear, from even a cursory look at the plans in this project and its history, that the board is looking at a perfect storm of an environmental problem. You have a very, very sizable development by a developer who has a very, very long history of environmental noncompliance on nearly every level. And in fact, the project itself is clearly noncompliant on multiple levels in a very, very environmentally sensitive and precious place at the confluence of the Bashak Hill and the Never Sink River under the Shangguan Bridge. And it is this board's job, as a matter of this process, to take every single critical comment, particularly the technical comments, very, very seriously to heart and to insist that the developer rectify everything. You are looking at a history of noncompliance of a whole series of structures, buildings, other things that are out of compliance, that they're saying that they're proposing now to bring into compliance without really doing anything, as well as new construction. And the most important single number coming out of all of this is, both in and of itself and what it means for the whole project, is that they're going from water use of 13,000 gallons a day-- this is in the DEIS-- of 13,000 gallons a day to 88,000 gallons a day. That's almost a seven-fold increase in water. And again, I want to emphasize that this is not just water. Everything is being increased commensurately, the use of the property, the traffic, the runoff, seven times in the situation that I described earlier. You have to step out of the situation that you may have been in before and be the detectives and the cops on behalf of this community to investigate everything. Andy Willingham was one of the first speakers. He came here. He has a list of engineering noncompliance from the stormwater to the sewage. He had basically two and a half minutes to try to get it out there. You have a responsibility to look at his written comment and go through everything. Another-- Mr. Schneider came from Long Island to tell you about the traffic issues. He had another two and a half minutes. You need to go through everything. This is a problem because we have-- we don't see from the board right now a commitment to fully engage in this. The process that's gone on tonight has been difficult for the community. They've been consistently stopped at three minutes, no matter what they've had to say.
Time.
Thank you.
Lauren McEwen.
Thank you. My name is Lauren McEwen. That's M-C, capital C-U-N-E. And my wife live at 323 Never Sink Drive in Deer Park. And as you might guess from the address, we have the Never Sink River flowing behind our backyard. I came to the area about 10 years ago, and I was actually attracted by activities at Dragon Springs. My wife is a choreographer for Shenyuan. I'm a partner in Unison Enterprises. It's a local building company based in Deer Park. And if you drive down Route 209, you'll see some of the new homes that we're building. I've also worked with a longtime Deer Park resident, Doug Ulrichs, to rehab several older homes for resale. I believe that the current plan for the completion of the Dragon Springs campus has been worked on by a number of competent professional experts and is a good plan. And I believe that it should be approved. It's involved not only experts employed by Dragon Springs, but also in consultation with people from the town of Deer Park, Orange County, and various New York State agencies. In particular, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has been involved, in part because of local requests that they do so. And therefore, any waste treatment and disposal issues that are implemented would be approved by the BEC and meet New York State's stringent requirements. Most of the concerns and criticisms I've heard seem to fall into two areas. One, mostly about things that have occurred in the past. And I know there's obviously basis for that. Dragon Springs has developed a new management team and employed what I think are very competent consultant groups of both engineering and legal experts. And I believe this comprehensive site plan is designed to correct problems from the past. Also, some people have raised the issue of whether Dragon Springs is just in general too big for the town of Deer Park and for its infrastructure. And I would say that I don't-- you know, Deer Park has lots of resources, historical sites. But there are some things that are missing. There was a large industrial plant on 209 that closed a few years ago.
James P. Gudicunst.
Good evening. My name is James P. Gudicunst. I live in the town of Highland in Sullivan County. I was born in Calicoon on the Delaware River. I was baptized in Chahola on the Delaware River. For the old timers, my family ran the Riviera Theater on the Delaware River. I ran a supermarket in the town of Highland on the Delaware River. And I currently run a supermarket up in Wurtzboro, which backyard is the Bashak Hill. I'm also been a town board member for the town of Highland and deputy supervisor for nine years. Additionally, I'm a recent board member for the Delaware River Keeper Network. I feel for the planning board up here. I've been in a situation where I've been sitting up there, and I've had the peasants with the pitchforks and the torches that are behind me trying to roast everybody. But in a situation where you're the decision body for this very important issue. One of the reasons I came up here, I just wanted to let you know that not only are the citizens of Deer Park very concerned about this issue, but at our board meeting last night, this issue did come up and was in discussion. I think not only Deer Park, but our surrounding towns are looking for this board, for its leadership, to stop these fakers who always are looking for forgiveness instead of permission. So I just want to say there are a lot of people around the town of Deer Park that support you and your decision-making. You have a lot of tools at your disposal to take care of this issue, and I hope you do. Thank you.
Dr. Wong.
Good evening. That is Wenyi, W-E-N-Y-I, last name W-A-N-G. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. I'm a former resident of Deer Park, 95 Galley Hill Road in Godabackville. Now I live in Middletown, currently a faculty member at the Middletown Campus of Feiting College. I have witnessed the positive changes brought by Dragon Springs to society in the last 18 years. I would like to speak in support of Dragon Springs' proposal of expansion. Inside Dragon Springs, there is two schools, Feiting Academy for Arts and Feiting College. It's a world-class institution training the top-notch classical Chinese dancers and musicians. Dragon Springs also provides facility to Shenyuan Performing Arts, which is internationally known as the best classical Chinese dance and music company in the world. 50 years ago, before-- just in China, I lost my grandpa, who'd been persecuted to death by communist regime. When I grew up, I swore to myself to dedicate my life to save people's life. Now, I have an opportunity to teach young generations here, local or internationally, who come here, want to become trained to be able to save other people's life. Being afraid of any spirituality that doesn't conform to the communist ideology and dictatorship, Chinese communist regime launched brutal persecution against peaceful practitioner Falun Gong in July 1999 because Falun Dafa, the too-popular, almost 10% population practice because benefit of health. According to the Human Rights Commission report each year and United States State Department-- and United States State Department Human Rights report, millions practitioner detained, arrested, and sentenced without due process. Many been tortured, beaten, or killed for their organs. Many children of practitioner became homeless often. With support of a local government and the US government, and Dragon Springs was able to help recite some of the often from China. Dragon Springs also host of internationally known Shenyun Performing Arts. Because their performance, more than millions and millions of people internationally know or been informed of ongoing persecution Chinese people face every day in China now. Many audience have been deeply touched by value and tradition value and the Shenyun present.
Time.
Thank you so much for giving me opportunity here.
Deborah Lash.
Good evening. My name is Deborah, D-E-B-O-R-A-H, last name Lash, L-A-S-C-H. I reside at 30 Cora Rose Lane in Huguenot, New York. I didn't come with a prepared speech, but I do want to say, I understand you're not elected and you don't have an easy job sitting here. What I do want to say is that as a resident of the Town of Deer Park, starting in Cuddy Blackville when I was born in 1959 and remaining here my whole life, is every time I've done something, I've tried to follow the rules. All I'm here to ask you is to take into consideration all these environmental impact studies, the site plan, what it's going to do to this community. I don't care who moves here, what their religious belief is. We're all on this earth to work together. I just want them to follow the same rules that I need to follow when I do something. I'm a taxpayer. I've been a taxpayer my entire life, and I feel that I should have some say. We elect town officials who put you in your positions to do the job. My concern is the runoff and its impact on a potential flood. I live down in what used to be the space area off 209 across from Space Park. I flooded twice. And there's many homes in this community that have been condemned due to flooding and dirty water. So what's going to happen with that water? Are they going to stop it when we have tremendous water? It's a real concern for a lot of us. And I'm just asking you to consider everything before you make a decision. But based on what I've seen and heard, I think your decision should be no. Thank you.
Stephen Metz.
My name is Stephen, and the last name's Metz, M-E-T-T-S. I am from Ulster County, gardener specifically. I have an exhibit to show the board tonight, and then also two points that I'd like to bring to your attention. The first point is the location of bald eagle nest and habitat. I was one of several individuals that was involved in the monitoring of bald eagles' nests during the Millennium HDD event. During that time, we found two nests, one at 1.8 miles and one at 2.7 miles. One of the nests had two eaglets, possibly three eaglets. This does not correspond with what's in the current DEIS document. In the current DEIS document, we see two known nests in close proximity to the project site. I'm quoting. The locations are described within one mile of the site and the other more than three miles southwest of the site. And that's different than the statement that BEC gave in the notice of incomplete application dated May 25, 2016. Here, they stated that there was two known nests, but approximately 0.4 miles to one mile, and the major concern was noise. I believe that these disturbances are serious and they do not inspire confidence in the current document. And as a lead agency, the Town of Deer Park should be aware of these disturbances. The second related issue is the habitat fragmentation that's going to occur from this project. There'll be both an increase and an intensification based on this project. I have a map that I've produced, and you should have that in your documentation. At a 0.5-mile proximity corridor, there's 4,000 acres. Of those 4,000 acres, 60 of those acres have been lost since 2011. That's forest cover loss. There's two hotspots that are responsible for that loss, and that's the Millennium Pipeline HDD and the Dragon Springs development. The application before you now proposes to increase and intensify by 40%. So we're talking about approximately 30 acres of tree clearing. This is a significant removal of habitat, and it is definitely fragmentation. There's no doubt about it. The planning board should certainly reconsider the no habitat impact assertion made by the applicant, both because of the nesting issue. We don't know where those sites are actually located, and the forest loss data itself. And the forest loss data that I'm using is coming from the University of Maryland, and it's dated to 2018. So it's a brand-new recent data set, and it's pretty accurate. It can cover to 30 meters. And I have a couple other points that I put in my letter before you for consideration. But I strongly would advise the board to really take a look at these details I brought to your attention, as well as some of the details that DeRin and some of the other commenters have made. Thank you.
Bruce Quinn.
Hi, my name is Bruce Quinn. I live at 248 Guymar Turnpike, Godaffroy, New York, which is God's country. I live around the bridge there, which cars have hit and got killed. A guy rolled over out of his car into the creek and killed himself. The car was parked in my front yard. My wife calls me at work and says, "There's a car parked in our front yard that knocked our tree down." And the door was open. The cops came by, and there was a guy laying dead, face down in the river. So I thought something would be done about the bad turn there. The bridge was built in 37. I'm a contractor by trade. I seen the stamp on the bridge, which was built in 1937. So I figured sooner or later, with the 30 or 40 Dix trucks that go by with some of the construction work up there, it would show a little deterioration and break down, and somebody would have to do something about it, but nothing. Another guy hit the bridge one day, flipped over. The guy bangs on my door and says, "There's a car, there's a car." I said, "Where's a car?" He says, "It's right there." Every snowstorm, every winter, I guide, I direct, I pull and I help tractor trailers, 53-foot tractor trailers. Isn't there a weight limit on a road like that? If people could see the condition of the guardrail there, they'd be literally going a mile an hour. You all know that, I know that. It wouldn't stop a bicycle from going over. The accidents, the people I help, the Shenyun buses that come by, how they, they're good drivers. I've got a little driving experience. They're darn good drivers. They get through what they get through with them big buses with another big vehicle coming down. We all have to live here, and yes, we all can live together. But let's all pay attention to the rules. I was a contractor. I had every job inspected that I did. And when it wasn't done properly, I had to fix it, which was very seldom that happened. You live by reputation. And if I had a reputation like some people that we're talking about, "I can't believe this is even taking place, that somebody even consider them doing something that..." Little honor and dignity would be involved. Thank you.
Liam O'Neill.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service. I'm going to read a couple of...
Could you state your name for the record?
Liam O'Neill. I live in Town of Deer Park, Sparrow Bush. I'm going to read four sentences that I found in the 2003 comprehensive plan that's still posted on the Town of Deer Park website. "The Town of Deer Park desires to become a full partner in the development of the tri-state area by working with its neighbors to extend and coordinate public services. The town hopes to attract compatible businesses and industries needed by the tri-state area. It's expected this will help to balance the town tax base, provide new jobs closer to home for town residents, and reduce the need for travel outside the region. The town specifically desires to increase tourism as a source of economic development, taking advantage of the town's natural and man-made attractions and resources. It also desires to support and grow agriculture as an industry by encouraging new and specialized farm industries, such as the New Hope Equestrian Center." I read this because in 2003, the then leaders of the town put forth this as a plan that they envisioned the town could work towards. And 15 years on, 16 years on, we can applaud Dragon Springs for working towards and achieving many of these. And there have been a lot of bumps along the way, but I think with this document in hand and what has been achieved up at their 800 or 900 acres, bridging both towns, I think that is, we can see that Deer Park and Dragon Springs are not as far divided as perhaps many of the feelings expressed here tonight would display. So with that said, I hope you can take a good look, a long look at the application and work for the benefit of the town going forward. Thank you.
John Dorval.
My name's John Dorval. I live at 278 Never Sink Drive, Port Jervis, New York. And I just came here tonight to voice my opinion and concern. And I've been a resident here for probably 40 some-odd years. I've lived in Myers Grove. I've lived on Prospect Hill. And I've spent a lot of time in the Never Sink River as a kid, swimming, fishing, all that kind of stuff. And it's a very important resource to us here in this community. And that flowing into the Delaware, of course. Now, you know, Dragon Springs, to me, has not acted in good faith since they've been here. I mean, violating building codes and so on. You know, not adhering to building permits and such. And, you know, it's just one thing after another. Every project they do seems to, there seems to be an issue. And, you know, this is a really big project. Really big impact on the environment and our community, on our roads and everything we've heard that tonight. And, you know, with the history, without them making good on any violations that may be there, you know, getting everything up to code, I wouldn't even consider moving forward with this project. And then, besides that, you know, the Town of Deer Park have to go to court and pay court fees and pay lawyers and stuff like that. It's not that they're, you know, taking money from the Town of Deer Park, a government body. They're taking money from me and my neighbors. That's my money. That's my neighbor's money. You know, that is my concern, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Albert Roman.
Hello, everyone. My name is Albert Roman. I live on Galley Hill Road. And in a nutshell, I feel that if Dragon Springs can come into compliance with all the regulations, they have every right to exist there and build. Two points I'd like to make. The first one sounds a little bit far, but I bring it back, so please stay with me. I just want to make a comment on the people applying for the permit. Several years ago, I lived in China. I worked as a teacher for a year there. It wasn't a long time, just a year, but I saw with my very own eyes the effects of communism. I saw that Chinese people had been terrorized so much that they had lost their sense of justice and kindness. One evening, I was riding my bike home. Everyone seemed to have a bike in China. And I came across an old man who was a rickshaw carrier. But he was unconscious and in the middle of the street. I didn't know if he was alive or not, so I stopped immediately and checked on him. He regained consciousness, and I helped him to the side of the road where he said he was okay. On my bike ride home, I wondered why so many other cyclists didn't stop to even check if he was alive. I realized that nobody wanted to get involved in another person's problems. That experience left a deep impression in me. Even as a 22-year-old, I could see that the Communist Party has stripped people of their humanity. Any Chinese person who dares to stand up for what's right in that kind of society of terror and apathy is not typical. In that evil setting, only the bravest, most noble people will stand up for what's right. Many of the Chinese people living nearby are those bravest, most noble people of China. They were tortured, imprisoned, demonized, forced to lose their homes, jobs, and schooling before they made it to the US. "We are your neighbors. We are true patriots." And I hope it never happens, but if Americans were to ever collectively suffer grave injustice, only the bravest, most noble will stand up for what's right, and you can count us in. I know this process has been, this has been a process and it's required patience, but I think it's worth working with Dragon Springs. The second item I'd like to talk about is the local economy. When outside money comes in and circulates in a local economy, it directly and indirectly benefits the local population. Similarly, when people move here, they bring their savings, their treasure, and they buy property. As a result, there are fewer foreclosed homes. Those homes are better maintained than the ones that sit foreclosed. And those homeowners pay property taxes, which increases the town revenue. Also, these new homeowners eat the local restaurants. They get their cars repaired locally. They buy cars from local dealerships. They procure services from local craftsmen and businessmen, and they buy materials from local suppliers. I believe Dragon Springs has attracted people to the area, which has in turn benefited and will continue to benefit the local community. Thank you.
Kaixin Yen.
Hi, my name is Kaixin Yen. Last name is Yen, Y-E-N. I live on Galley Hill Road in Cuddy Blackville. I've been here for 12 years, and I count myself part of the community. I think after 12 years, you've earned some part in this town. I just wanted to mention, so much has been mentioned about the environmental impact, but I'd like to say that at the base of it, I was thinking, why people would object to so many things that Dragon Springs does? And perhaps at the base of it, people just don't want it to be here. I understand in a way that it's something new, it's something different. But it is here, and it's been here for at least 12 years, and I don't think it's going away. And so no matter what anyone says, I don't think we want it to go away, truly, do we? If it's going to stay, it's going to need a wastewater treatment plant. And I think a lot of you may not realize, but it is a school. I mean, there are two schools, there's an academy and a college. I teach at the college, and I also help out at the academy. And I don't want our students to be in a school where the septic tank is going to possibly overflow at any given time. Any school, any educational institution has a right to have a working system. And I think that's something we need to take into consideration. You wouldn't want your kids going to a school that had these issues at all, would you? Same thing. So another thing I'd like to mention is, people have been saying that Dragon Springs is going to be dumping water into the rivers. I don't think it's going to be quite like that. We can keep an eye on it. I think it has to be done responsibly, and I believe it will be. And I think the environment, of course, we are concerned for the rivers. But, you know, the environment's for the people, too. And people count for a little bit more than trout sometimes. I think hunters know that, fishers know that. And not that we count that they're not important, but there needs to be a balance. And I think President Trump talks about that, too. The environment needs to...
Order, please. Just give her the same respect everybody else got.
The environment is important, and we will definitely keep that in mind. But people are people, and people are important. So, you know, Deer Park's going to be growing in the future, whether we like it or not. People move out from New York City. And, you know, Dragon Springs, it could do a lot worse for a neighbor, really. You could have perhaps a different kind of institution. You could have a factory. You could have a college where people, the kids are doing drugs... drugs and drinking and being rowdy in the streets. It's possible, but that's not what Dragon Springs is about. And I think it's, at least it's not an eyesore. We, this campus is designed to be environmentally sort of compatible. So, all I can say is, I think it's, we live here, and we've brought a lot to the community.
Time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Kelly Brink.
Hi, I'm Kelly Brink. It's Kelly, K-E-L-I, Brink, B-R-I-N-K. I won't go over all the stuff they've already covered, but I wanted to point out some inconsistencies in their application, much like much of the inconsistencies over the years. One part says the construction's going to be 24 months, another part says it's going to be less than a year. There's a part where they marked 660 spaces for parking, another one says 1,000. They submitted the Delaware River Basin Commission docket as valid. It's an expired certificate. I also wanted to point out that, you know, they said there was nothing here, and they brought so much to the community. They brought nothing to the community, they brought stuff for themselves. Some of us moved here because there was nothing. Some of us wanted the natural beauty and the woods. We didn't want streetlights, we didn't want stores. If we wanted to live in the city, we'd have lived in the city, and if you came here and found nothing, you should have turned around and left. Some of us moved to the country atmosphere for the country. It was once a nice rural community. It's gradually systematically being destroyed. You can find them, you can find them, you can find them, you can file violations. It's like unringing a bell. It's not going to decontaminate the rivers, it's not going to bring back species that are destroyed. It also will not decontaminate people's wells. We don't have public water or sewer, we have our own wells, which, when it floods, get contaminated. Thank you.
Patrick Cavanagh.
My name is Patrick Cavanagh, C-A-V-A-N-A-U-G-H. I live at 258 Gally Hill Road in Cuddly Blackville. Dragon Springs is a very complex organization. It's not just one thing. You have practitioners who buy their own homes, who practice Fal Huangang, and then you have the organization of Dragon Springs that builds these huge places and pays no attention to our rules and our zoning and building permits and things like that, and you can't compare the two. These are nice people, as individuals, but it's this organization that pays no attention to any of our concerns. Coming up along as toward the end, most of what I had to say has already been said, but I would like to emphasize that because I'm not going over all these points, I still think they are valid, and that many of the people who did not speak tonight feel that way, too. You have in front of you a great deal of information. Seems that you can figure out what it's saying, and we hope that you will do your due diligence and come up with an intelligent situation, intelligent whatever that I can't come up with right now. Thank you very much.
Frank Ketchum.
Good evening, folks. Frank Ketchum, F-R-K-E-T-C-H-A-M. I come to you tonight to speak about liabilities, the buildings that have already been constructed in Dragon Springs that are in violation of fire codes. There's one item in this revised site plan that addresses that, and that's some kind of an emergency ramp that doesn't meet code. Their new proposed building doesn't address fire codes. The Deer Park Rural Alliance foiled fire inspections. The town received a letter denying the fire inspections. They weren't allowed in Dragon Springs. Any inspections that have been done have been select inspections, only allowed in certain areas of the buildings. It's crazy to think that the Town of Deer Park has taken on this liability to allow people to be in these buildings that do not meet fire code. They're teaching, they're teaching classes in these buildings. There's people in these buildings every single day that don't have certificates of occupancy. They have a dam in this revised site plan. They had an approved dam, it was an earthen dam with a road on top of it. They chose to build a dam tunnel. Over 200 yards long, this concrete tunnel was constructed without the knowledge of the town. I don't know how that happened. The DEC caught on to it, the stop-work order was put in place. This dam tunnel still exists today, and now they've changed it to be called a covered roadway. They're going to build a dam in front of it. Now, I have in front of me the Never Sink Basin report from April 2, 2005, for the floods that were wiped out Myers Grove. Myers Grove has been in a flood plain for years, forever, I suppose, since it was constructed. And the flood mitigation plan that was developed in Deer Park that is in place today through FEMA, with FEMA insurance, is all a concern for this dam that they're about to build up there in Dragon Springs. And the dam permit that existed prior has expired. It should, this item should be removed from this revised site plan. It should, I know it is before the DEC, a new application. Otherwise, this dam should be deleted from this revised site plan, and the lake should not occur. The, yeah. Again, the fire codes, I mean, this is a health and safety issue, people, and this is a liability that you folks have undertaken. The Town of Deer Park is going to be liable. When the volunteer firemen have to go in there to fight a fire and somebody dies, it's going to be on your ass. Thank you.
James Smith.
Good evening. My name is James H. Smith. I've gotten to know many of the community here yourselves and the locals in past years, and I'm a photographer, practicing architect, and also I teach architecture at one of the local schools. But my experience really came, my passion for nature or enjoyment was growing up in Australia where the setting there, family holidays, camping at the beach, or going to Cubs and Scouts, walking in the Australian bush. But it was really after my studies when I went to travel to Italy, the Tuscan hills and the landscapes there, I really saw how man can live within nature and create a very harmonious setting, this place to inhabit, and whether it was the vineyards, or the villas, or the hilltop towns, it was truly this, almost felt like this semi-divine kind of environment, this picturesque setting. But it's the buildings that also embrace these proportions of creation, of nature's creation, and these, it's almost as though they have brought our own proportions into that architecture. And it wasn't until, I then took a plane from Rome to New York and visited Dragon Springs and volunteered there, and what I saw there was a very similar sort of beauty in this harmonious setting, and you have lakes with the hills and pavilions, and then these, the temples sort of majestic in their form, and again, the proportions of divine creation I could find in these buildings, and I saw it was just translated into another cultural context. But just looking at the site plan of Dragon Springs, I really see that the bigger vision of what's been created there, it does adopt this kind of, this beauty, this overall harmony. And what better a place than a place of teaching of morality and virtue and to present the performing arts, and a place for people to cohabit, man within nature. So, I would just like to show this perspective and this overall support for the bigger ambitions. It hasn't all been smooth as it's played out, and I'm sure neither was the creation of those hilltop towns in Italy. Like, they went through a learning process and to establish that. I see market improvement in the plan and the professionals that are on board now to learn those lessons and to make improvements into the future. And with the overall vision in mind, I truly think what will become of this area and this community and what people will see is truly the beauty of this refined culture coming to Deer Park. Thank you.
Stephen Su.
My name's Stephen Su. I live up on Pinpack Trail. You know, a lot of it's been spoken before. I'm basically concerned about the waste runoff and the poisoning of the streams, but I think a lot of this is getting lost in the weeds. We're talking about, you know, stuff that doesn't matter. It's not, we're talking about building, you know? You're building in an area that is rural, okay? You know, you want to put a performance center or something like that, put it in Port Jervis, put it in a developed area, something that has the infrastructure. Why would you put it up in, you know, everybody knows Gally Hill Road, these are small roads. This isn't the area for, you know, 1,000 cars per day. It just doesn't make any sense. And you guys have a really tough job, because, you know, no matter what comes or what happens, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be unhappy with you guys. And, you know, you got to think of what's going to be best for most of the people. You're not going to make people happy. You're just going to have to do the best, the best you can. I appreciate your time.
John Hoffman.
I've lived in, I've been a property owner in Deer Park since 1962. I've retired from the Department of Environmental Protection, New York City. Unlike most people who come up here, I don't have an opinion for or against, and I hope the members of the board, if you do, you can put that aside and step back and judge the Dragon Springs the same way you would do Harvard or Yale or any other American institution. And I rely on your fairness and your knowledge to make the right decision. Thank you. I live on Never Sink Drive, Port Jervis, New York. My name's John Hoffman. Thank you.